Good evening. Today is Monday, March 27th, 2023. This is the meeting, regular meeting of the Jamaica Select Board at 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is to call for any late additions. I have two, but before I say mine, does anybody else have anything to add? Okay. One is a minor addition, which I'll just put probably after the discussion of Village Cemetery, and that's that the Select Board will certify compliance for town road and bridge standards. That's a critical part of our compliance with V Trans requirements that afford us grant money, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll talk more about that later. The second item I'd like to address, I think everybody in this room and currently on Zoom is aware, that Terry Bills Garland passed away suddenly yesterday. You know, grieving can be selfish. I'm feeling very selfish. I miss her already, and I know I'm devastated at her loss, and she is going to be a huge loss for this town. Her dedication, her smarts, her strength, her care was evident in everything she did. I found her to be such a joy to work with, and she elevated everything she did for this town. There will be, we understand, a remembrance, a celebration of her, hopefully on Saturday. The discussion right now is that it's going to be at the Stratton Town Hall. Don't know the details yet. I'm sure it'll be on Facebook. We'll discuss with the family and possibly posting it on the town website, so people will know. But we will miss her dearly. Sarah has really stepped in today. Thank you very, very much, Sarah, for keeping his sexual functions going, and for everyone else who is here with us. And my deepest, deepest condolences to the family and to all of us who will miss her terribly. Really, not enough that can be said, but we'll have more opportunities. And with that, very, very sad.
Can we take a moment of silence on that note?
Absolutely.
Just a little there.
We miss you, Terry. Is everyone okay to continue? This is really hard. All right, we'll continue, and if anybody needs to break, please let me know. This is really, for me, for one, this is not something I've experienced, anything even close to this. So I'm open. Thank you, Derek, for that suggestion and any others you might have. So the next order of business is to approve the minutes from the March 13th Select Board meeting, and I'll ask for a...
So...
A move. Thank you. Is there, are there any discussions on the minutes from the last meeting?
One item, the very first one, we actually missed the newspaper of record, so that's got moved to this week's agenda, so that should be scratched from the minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, I copied from you or I didn't take it out, and I really said, "After I sent it to them." Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any nays?
Derek, your name is Derek, I'm not.
Oh, Derek, I'm not.
Since I'm the relay, we don't have our video projector going today, so I'm the relay between Zoom and the floor here, if it sounds awkward if I say something.
Is it helpful for me to speak louder, to say aye, or?
Sure, we can hear you fine if that comes out over your mic.
All right. The next item of business is, actually, it says one of our way permit, but another one came in. The first is National Energy Control Services. They have, did it come with the check?
Yeah, it's got the receipt and the check.
Okay. This is... Just a single, oh, it's a fleet. This is a fleet one. The registrant is Beacon Sales Acquisition of 550 West 36th Street, Jasper, Indiana, and the contact is Courtney Beagle. I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve the overweight permit.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? No. Motion passed. The second one was received from Fabian Earth Moving Inc. It's an overweight permit for a fleet. The address is 1409 Pleasant Street, West Rutland, and the contact is John Center. Check received. I'll take a motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have two liquor licenses today, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And tobacco.
And tobacco, that's right. Everything that I knew before today.
One of them is complaining about the three.
Yes. Oh, really?
The folder that you set down here.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll send you for later. All right. And that's just Chris, sorry. All right, is these two?
There might be three. It should be Rossenville, Greg, and Rossis Street, so.
Good job. Very good. Don't forget Greg. So first is a, you know, the form has changed. It's the second class, license Blue Dot Beverages LLC. The email is Melmo's.
I know, that's me.
That's you. So Greg will probably not vote on this, but I'll make a motion to approve the Blue Dot Beverages LLC liquor license, second class. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, no nays, so the motion passes. And I've got another tobacco license for West River Provisions. We should probably vote them each separately, or can we, do we do the? I know this is the first time they separated out tobacco. Let's do separate, let's do separate. They are, they are, but it used to be just attached. It was that you tick the box, right? And now it's all like this, so, yeah. So we'll do it separately. First is the tobacco license. I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco license.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? None, obviously, and the motion passes unanimously. So that's the liquor license, that's the tobacco. The next is West River Provisions LLC, second class liquor license. All those that make a motion to approve the application by West River Provisions LLC for second class liquor license, this is renewal. All those, second? Okay. Any discussion? No. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Last is Rossenville Marketplace. Everybody knows that, the intersection of 38 and 100. Second class liquor license. I'll make a motion to approve the second class liquor license application of Rossenville Marketplace, L T D. Second. Any discussion? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Sorry, Derek, I heard you. The next is a tobacco license application, also from Rossenville Marketplace. So it. And I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco license application made by Rossenville Marketplace, L T D. Second. All those, any discussion? No discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Unanimous approval. Thank you, everyone. The next item, we touched on a little bit last time. On the town's website is the 2023, a request essentially from the state for participation in the 2023 State Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Now, there is some information being put together by the planning commission, which is the town, it's on the town level, the town's hazard mitigation plan. But the state is doing a broader-based hazard mitigation update, and this is really for all of our benefit. Right at the bottom, it's a one-page flyer. There's a QR code or a link. You can hear a very brief, it says 10 minutes, but it didn't seem like that. It's a short discussion of why, you know, why they're doing this, why the state's doing that, and why they want Select Boards to raise this in Select Board meetings. And I'll just mention a couple of the questions that the survey is asking members of the town to kind of focus on and just submit some thoughts, you know, a stream of consciousness. So, you know, what have you, either the town or you individually, already done to prepare for significant weather events in your community and protect residents from national, natural hazard impacts? What would you, as a citizen, like to see happen? You know, what are you, as citizens, concerned about in terms of hazards, whether they be flood or otherwise? And, you know, if there's not funding, what would you want to do to make funding happen? So this is just a way to give to the state information, both from the local government level, but also on the individual level. And there's a lot of information on that, on that link. Any questions on the survey or any discussion on that?
Does Wyndham Regional, our Wyndham Regional is, are they the facilitator of this? WRC Survey?
Yes, because each of the commissions is, right, gets this. Yes, exactly.
I have that on, not on the transportation. Which is getting combined with some other committees.
Okay, okay. And the due date on that, ooh, let me, I shouldn't have said that loud. April 28th. So they're really asking that you click on the, you know, either use the QR code or there's a link, and this flyer is there, posted on the website, to just give your thoughts, what you think is working, what's not, or what scares you. And, you know, each of the regional commissions are compiling the results of the survey, and it will be pushed back out to the towns and help guide us, and certainly help the regional commissions.
Jessica, just to be clear, this is the, on the site, the one that says 2023 State Hazard Mitigation Plan Update? So I'm looking at the right thing?
Yes, yes, exactly. It's like mostly green with a little blue in the bottom.
And we're asking the town members, community members, to go and do this on their own, to follow the link? We're not holding for them, so they should know they go into the, like?
Yes.
Or if they want to come to a Select Board meeting, they can.
Or they can, exactly, or they can come to a Select Board meeting and share thoughts and concerns.
Great.
For instance, say, people on Water Street had a concern about the bridge with the pier in it. That would be something that you would voice your opinion right here. You know, because when that flooded the first, well, when Irene, there was all kinds of suggestions and talk about that bridge being replaced, and when it does get replaced, to knock out that middle pier. Those kind of things.
Right.
May save Water Street from the next flood. And a lot of other things in town. But I can just tell you that Wyndham Regional, and I hope Chris isn't listening, but they don't get much of a response. So Jessica just kind of promoting this. Asking people to help, like, on the regional plan for the Wyndham Regional Commission, not just like our, the plan of all the plans. Hardly got any feedback at all that last time. No comments.
Probably.
A lot of their work, though, they're getting. So this, you know, it hasn't rained hard for a while.
Right. It's been bad. But we did just have a snowstorm. Maybe someone can write about the snowstorm.
Yeah, they had to.
And basically, you just mentioned too, would there be benefit to this Select Board having, you know, our own discussion around this and going through those questions from our perspective as well? To submit that in addition to all the individuals? Because I know it's kind of great for towns to come together and do this. But I know as the Select Board, if we could submit a response and share that as a group.
Probably does.
Sure, there would be a response.
Sure, sure, yeah, it does, exactly, the source.
More weight, like, with a meeting facilitated by the Select Board or just input. Input gathered by the Select Board and it's submitted, you know, certainly wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other comments on that topic? The next item on the agenda is to select our newspapers of record. So I will make a motion that this year we nominate two, we select two publications, The Brattleboro Reformer and The Comments, as the Jamaica Town Newspapers of Record.
Second.
Any discussions on our selection for newspapers of record?
Yes.
Okay.
When we put something in, does it have, it may sound silly, do we have to put it in both of them?
No, we don't, because that was a question last year when we found out.
We can if we want to?
We can if we want to, but that would be a law.
But legally, it would be one or the other.
I think it would depend on this. It would have to be a unique circumstance, right? Yeah, yeah. But there are reasons why sometimes it doesn't, it didn't always work with our single choice.
No, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, so it's good to have an option. Okay, good question. Any other comments or discussion? Having no further comment, all those in favor of selecting The Brattleboro Reformer and The Comments as our newspapers of record, please say aye.
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 Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. The next is to, the next item on the agenda is the completion of the selection of the fence viewers. We can have up to three. We selected two the last time, and Patrick McQuillan has raised his hand to be a third fence viewer. So I nominate Patrick McQuillan as the third fence viewer.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No? Seeing no discussion, call a vote. All those in favor of appointing Patrick McQuillan as the third fence viewer? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous aye. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the, I guess I would say more than the dissolution of the Village Cemetery Association, the dissolution of the association and the concomitant acceptance of that responsibility by the town. So today's discussion, in two weeks, we will take a formal action. But just very quickly, and Karen, please do not hesitate to raise your hand and step in. I'll just go into the technicalities, and then you can talk a little bit about what's behind this. So at the next meeting, assuming our discussion today doesn't yield a different result, the Village Cemetery Association will take a number of steps to dissolve as a legal entity. They are a nonprofit, registered with the Secretary of State of the State of Vermont. There's a relatively simple procedure. They have to warn, they have to, all of the members of the board have to agree to waive a notice, and there will be a unanimous written consent of all members to the dissolution. Interestingly, the Vermont statutes do not have a formal mechanism for the Select Board to accept the responsibility of the Village Cemetery. So we'll craft a resolution and run it by Nick Lowe, just to see if he has anything to add or not. At that point, and we'll, of course, do the homework between now and two weeks from now, we need to reach out to the three funds, bankers that are associated with the three funds currently that support the cemetery, and just, not audit per se, but get confirmation of the current value of each of those funds and just the structure of the funds, et cetera. And what we'll probably do is resolve to take in those, you know, to manage those funds, to continue those operations, and, you know, do all things necessary and appropriate. There are statutes in terms of how towns have to behave with respect to cemeteries. We just, there's just this, like, little gap, you know, in terms of exactly what steps you take to formalize the fact that you're, the town is assuming responsibility for the cemetery. But that's what would happen, and probably we would have, you know, 15 minutes before the regular meeting next week, the board members or whomever's going to come representing the association would design paperwork, just meet in the room and have, you know, what would be the meeting? And we could have, you know, early on in the agenda to resolve, to accept that responsibility, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the, kind of, the logistics. Did you want to talk a little bit about the cemetery and?
Could you tell us which cemetery it is for the record? Because we have a bunch of cemeteries, and I know which one it is.
It's actually called the Village Cemetery Association.
It's the Village Cemetery Association.
Right. Village Cemetery Association, right down here on Main Street, just below the Masada Hall. And anyway, we're, it's an aging group that is on the board, and everyone was unanimous in wanting to dissolve this association and hand it over to the town. So that's what we're doing.
So when?
Two weeks, at the next meeting.
So does the cemetery take care of itself financially?
Yes, I mean.
For how long?
Pretty much, pretty much.
People keep moving in and keeps, is it, what do you call that?
Self-perpetuating. So there are three funds which yield, you know, revenue, and that revenue is used exclusively for the care of the cemetery. There is nominal fee to be buried there, although, did you guys raise the fee or you did not?
So there's about a little over $70,000 in these three funds called perpetual care funds, and you can only use the interest from those three accounts to go toward the cemetery. There is, there's what, two little checking accounts or one?
Right, one, one, I think now, yeah.
With a little less than $1,000 in it, I guess, to, that we use to pay to have somebody take care of it. Austin Meeks had been taking care of it.
Right, is he still doing it though?
We have not hired him for this year, so I guess that would be.
That'll be under discussion, right, right.
We charge $300 per grave. $250 goes into the checking account, $50 goes into a perpetual care fund, is how we have it set up. You can decide to do whatever. All the other cemeteries in town, I sent you a large.
Yes.
A large fund.
We were, Sarah was wrangling with that today, yes.
On all the cemeteries in town. And you charge right now $25 a grave.
Right. I saw that in your notes. I was pretty surprised.
It's pretty incredible. We do have in there fees that other cemeteries, surrounding cemeteries charge, that are usually $200 to $1,000 per grave.
One-time fees.
Well, yeah.
Is that with the markers or is that, four markers or is that?
It explains it in there. Some have markers, some don't. I think that you definitely need to up the price on all cemeteries.
Townsend's 4A.
4A.
Just purchased some real estate down there.
Yeah.
That includes markers, I think, right?
Well, that was two markers. I borrowed two from my sister, who didn't need all four. Per, per Charlie's suggestion.
Little coin, family.
Look, you're a murderer.
Right, right.
Yeah. Now, I think, you know, one takeaway from this conversation is we probably need to dust off, you know, the fact that the town already owns and manages a number of cemeteries and.
Could mow the same.
Yeah, and we, so we probably should take a look at them and just make some updates.
That $1,000 covered, that's mowing and everything? Or is that, are we going to inherit an expense to maintain? When you said that guy takes care of it, what's that mean?
Oh, he mows, he does clean up and mows and.
Branches and, yeah.
Mows it all year for?
No, no, we still need to take the money out, the interest out of those accounts.
And it covers the mowing for all year?
Pretty much.
Yeah, there's like a small deficit.
In the past years, we've sent out requests for donations. But that's three times in maybe 20 years, something like that. Other than that, it covers it.
What if the town didn't want the cemetery? Then what?
Technically, we don't have an option.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
It'll be an abandoned cemetery.
Right.
And you have to take over an abandoned cemetery.
We would then have to do something about it. We would have to resolve it. If we didn't want it to be a cemetery any longer, there's a long and complicated procedure to go through that. Right. I don't think anybody's proposing that, right? I mean, this is, you know, it's part of our town's history, and it's right in the village, so.
And why? Why did the Historical Society have to pay to treat the fence around the cemetery?
We didn't, the Cemetery Association did that.
Oh, okay. You know why that big fence is around that whole cemetery, don't you?
Well, cemeteries have to have a fence.
You know why?
Why is that?
Because everybody's dying to get in there.
Oh, yeah.
I can't believe you asked.
I can't do that, yeah, I can't do that, right, exactly.
Technically, you have to have a fence around every cemetery, and you don't necessarily have a fence around every cemetery.
How many cemeteries are there in town?
Oh, seven?
Seven?
It's in that 100-plus page.
I didn't count them up.
No, it's like seven or eight. You'd be surprised.
Well, but there are more.
There are little ones. They're the inhibiny ones, like the Robinsons.
Robinsons, yeah.
Those are just, one's listed in the report, they're just big enough that they actually.
Yeah, those are the bigger ones, but there are more.
So even if, I mean, going back to Andy's question, even if this was not a financially stable, I mean, we're still obligated to take on the risk or whatever of running a cemetery? Because that's just the nature of it?
Yeah.
There's another little cemetery, the Robbins Cemetery down in East Jamaica, that has been totally neglected, and we will be.
Is it all high church or no?
No. And I can't quite, Terry and I were working on who owned it, and we can't quite figure it out. But that's down in East Jamaica, and we were going to send in a request. If three people send a request to the town, requesting that they take over an abandoned cemetery, I think you have to put in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks, would somebody like to take this over?
Right.
And if nobody does after a certain amount of time, then you take it over. And if nobody does after a certain amount of time, then you take it over. So this, the little cemetery down there could use maybe somebody just going through once a year and, and clearing it out.
So almost surprisingly, Glazens didn't own it because they, you know, they own so much of the land down there with that.
Right. Just if I may deal with.
Yeah. Did you, did you work with Terry on finding a deed or no? All right, that's for Karen's project.
So if a cemetery is on private property, it could be considered abandoned if that landowner is not taking care of it?
Mm-hmm.
That's fascinating.
Yeah.
More than that.
Right.
We have a cemetery in Maine on our property. It was ours because it was our property.
Oh, it was family. And you were maintaining?
No, it wasn't our family. It was the family of the people who made the farm that we bought.
Oh, right.
It was our responsibility to steward.
It was probably in the deed.
Had a really nice box down in it and I was like, I'm not digging around in there. But it's interesting to know that I don't know anybody would have been like, I want to take care of the cemetery on your property.
Normally, family cemeteries, there's a, there's a covenant in the deed that obligates anybody who buys it, so it runs with the land to maintain the cemetery.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, hopefully you all will read this, I don't know, 125 pages or something like that.
I'll have to see if I can put it in a nice booklet.
Some of it, there are rules and regulations from the state are included in it, you know, what your obligations are and, but also where we're at, how many are in each cemetery, things like that.
Right.
But you need to think about maps for each cemetery.
Um, yeah, I mean.
There is not a map for each cemetery.
If you look at the regs, there's supposed to be a map. It doesn't say it has to be an official survey, an engineer survey, but you're supposed to have a map and it's supposed to be recorded on a slide and the whole nine, so. Yeah, we have some housekeeping we could, we could accomplish when it comes to that. Any other thoughts?
I, I'd be willing to look up or to connect with the Vermont Genealogy Library to see if there's any information there about, particularly the Robbins Cemetery, but other. I mean, they have a whole library of, and certainly grave markers and things like that are part of the research that gets done, so they might.
There's a lot of find a grave. There's, there's a lot of need.
Right, any research you want to do that happened, which is our understanding.
Super curious about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I think I'll probably put Robbins on the top of the list there.
Yeah. Doing a little deep looking.
You're going to Charlie and Martin somewhere.
Yeah. Charlie's done a little work on the Robbins Cemetery and there is a monument in the center that points up that's fallen off and he had tried to put it back on at one point, but it needs to go on.
He knows we're almost like a cemetery in Vermont.
Yeah, yes.
And Massachusetts. He took his degrees in Boston.
How mu, do you know how much, and this is no joke here. How much room there is in Jamaica Cemetery? Is it, you know, open or?
We still have a fair amount of room.
Like 100, 100 or?
A plot?
I'm just curious because anyone, it's not just for Jamaica people.
Right, right.
Anyone can give.
Oh, anyone, yeah, anybody can.
If you can make the purchase.
You also have the South Canadian Cemetery that is pretty much out of space. I don't know if you got to that in there or not, but.
No, not yet.
It's a beautiful little cemetery up there. There's, I don't know, 400 or so graves up there, maybe 350. It, it says it in there. Anyway, it, it's just about out of space. We just had four more people buy graves. So there's $100 to go into your pocket. Um, anyway. Not the pocket. Anyway, the town in the 90s, 1990s purchased .18 acres to the right of that. And you're going to need to do some work to it, to level it out. But the cemetery itself is almost filled up. And it's a pretty active cemetery as far as Jamaica cemeteries go. So that's going to need quite a bit of work there to level it out.
For the extra, for the extra land?
Yep, and fencing around it.
Okay.
Is the one on Maury Road active?
Yeah, it is.
That's beautiful.
It is. No map, although I spent three days with two ladies last summer mapping it out. And I still have to put it onto some paper, but.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Andy, that you were?
Not about that. Can we get some information? I can just tell you that I emailed you all that Stuart Parker said he would be there, rescue and represent me.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
The file that we'll send.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to just mention the, we'll just go through the business that I added, the late agenda items. So as I mentioned earlier, every year, the select board certifies compliance with the state-approved template for inventorying, location, size, condition of roads, bridges, causeways, culverts and highway-related retaining walls. So Sarah, you obviously have to type this whole thing, but I'm going to read it because it's a resolution. So I'm going to make a motion that the select board resolve that we have reviewed, understand and comply with the town road and bridge standards of the town of Jamaica, Vermont, passed and adopted by the select board on today, March 27, 2023. We further certify that our adopted standards do meet or exceed the minimum requirements included in the June 5, 2019 state-approved template, that's the most recent. And we further certify that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory which identifies locations, size, deficiencies, conditions of roads, bridges, causeways, culverts and highway-related retaining walls on class one, classes one, two and three town highways and their estimated cost of repair. I'll look for a second and then we can go to.
Second.
Okay. So just as part of discussion attached to the inventory that we will all hopefully sign is the V-Trans analysis of our highway budget that was just approved. And we'll all, there's a place for us all to sign that as well and a little bit of a breakdown. Any questions on that? Any discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the certification of compliance as I have recited it into our record, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. And Derek, these do have to be signed by all of select board members, so at some point, if you wouldn't mind stopping into the office and you can sign both documents.
Yeah, apply the next area.
Right, thank you very much. The next is item on the agenda is to review and approve the timesheets for the town office, Listers Highway and Transfer Station. Those were, as always, put on our Google Drive by Terry. Did anybody have any questions on them? All right, I make a motion to review and approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? And all those in favor of approving the timesheets for the town office, Listers Highway and a transfer station, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Derek. That's unanimous.
Actually, I have a question on this topic, but not about the timesheets. So I don't know if that comes up here or somewhere else.
Um, do you mean pay orders?
No, I mean, yeah.
No, well, the next, the next item is a pay order. Is it accounts payable that you were, had a question on?
No, it was more just town structure. I was just curious of organizational.
Well, why don't we?
Management that might be a difference.
Right, what, we have just one more official item and then we have public concerns. Do you want to raise it? If that's okay, we'll raise it in public concerns. So the last formal item on the agenda is to review and approve the pay orders. They're in the basket. They're also on the, on the Google Drive. Any, I'll, I'll make a motion to review and approve the pay orders. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions, anything in the folder? No? Then all those in favor of approving the pay orders, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Derek?
You said aye.
Oh, you did? Oh, I didn't hear it. Sorry, unanimous. Thank you, Derek. Sorry about that. I didn't hear you. So now it's public concerns. Did you want to open us up in public concerns, Derek, with what you were just going to mention?
Uh, I don't know that it's a public concern. It's more of a select board member inquiry. So I'm making, it's more of a conversation. I just didn't know, like thinking of the different departments and throughout the town and if there's an organizational structure of reporting and where that lives and what is our role in that and. Now it's going to be very relevant, unfortunately, with Terry, but also thinking of other departments and just who, you know, manages or looks at, looks at all of that.
Right.
And is that our purview with, you know, we have the roads, highway, we have the library, we have all these different departments and I don't think there's an org chart. And I don't know that we just both often work that way and sometimes they do, but I don't think we really have an HR. I'd be curious to have that conversation, if not now, at another meeting perhaps.
Right, so I can do, I can talk to some of that. We do have Paul here who is, you know, in charge of our emergency management plan, which is, you know, one element of what you just mentioned. So having, like you, having lived in a corporation for more than two decades, I know, I know what you're looking, what, what, what you're envisioning or what you're referring to. And I would say that there is not, there's not an org chart other than if you go on the website, you see each of the departments of the town, who the members are, what their roles are and roughly what their, what their job description is, very high level. There is.
Yeah, I don't actually see that for some of the departments.
Oh, possibly, possibly. That's probably, you know, there's probably some good kind of hygiene that could happen in that regard, Derek, very much in considering your background. I'm wondering if I'm hearing your hand going up to take a look at this and to see where we could, you know, improve that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess I am sort of putting that out there and I'm happy to do the legwork.
I think from a reporting structure too, just being a small town, we don't really have this strong hierarchy. Hierarchy. So a lot of, that's a lot of, I think, I mean, a lot of the, what we did at the last meeting with our appointments was to kind of assign a liaison at the board level so that everybody's not reporting to everybody, so to speak. So that is kind of a liaison, but as a direct report, it's not real pure middle.
We don't have a cauldron per se, other than Paul's, you know, cauldron, but that's really.
Well, like, Ernie up at the transfer station calls you his boss, Jessica.
So.
But I didn't know, like, thinking of the town roads too, like, like who, who was overseeing the highway, roads department.
That one's probably a little bit more defined because we do have a road foreman who the individuals report to. And then the road foreman has a liaison, liaison relationship with myself as the road commissioner. But the road commissioner job really falls to the whole board. So I'm just kind of the point person for that. I have the title, so to speak, but it's not necessarily that Paul or not, I mean, Keith reports to me. I mean, it's just kind of, some of that's just the nature of small government, I think, that a lot of these roles report to the board.
It is the form of it. It's, it's the, the nature of Vermont governance that it is.
And I appreciate you allowing my ignorance because Greg, I didn't realize that as road commissioner that, that was how that played in. And so there's a lot there that I should probably learn on the side if I'm not working during the time here.
Right.
But you opened up an interesting.
I'll follow up on one, one conversation.
I mean, it opens up an interesting dialogue that maybe there's room for some improvement, so to speak, that kind of thing, so.
And you're in road foreman too. You are the one that gets the call from the state police at 2:00 in the morning when you're.
Some of that hasn't been at 2:00 in the morning, but.
Thank God.
Eight oh two on the, on your caller ID, the state police.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But not at 2:00 in the morning, luckily.
So you watch it while I'm.
Sarah, I'm Susan, sorry. I said this is the second time today. That's all right. I was referring to you earlier and I called you Sarah and I was talking to Sarah.
Kind of along those lines, going back to the discussion around the cemetery and the town taking over the cemetery association, would the town then appoint a liaison or coordinator for the cemeteries?
Uh, well, there's the standard roles, which I don't have in front of me. We have the, what's, there's the sexton and, yeah, I don't have.
It's really just the sextons for the cemetery commission.
Right, right.
Um, for the town. And then each of the active cemeteries has a sexton.
Okay.
My father was the sexton of the Village Cemetery.
So then the town is responsible for appointing or finding a sexton.
Yeah, and we will once in two weeks, when we kind of, you know, own the, own this one, have to appoint a sexton, which is something to think about. Hmm?
At least one.
Well, we'll just deal with the village right now.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, it's something to think about. Okay, okay.
No, at least, at least one for a cemetery that size.
Right, right. Sure. Any other public concerns, questions, comments? All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone for coming.